There's a public hearing for additional appropriations. It's 5:30.
Is this the building department?
I don't know who. Is it for the building department?
It is for additional appropriation for Resolution Number 14 for the $19,400. We are going to be, they're going to be asking for additional sums.
So yeah, it was an additional appropriation for the building department, I guess. Originally, they were asking for $19,400. I believe we're just going to ask for more.
Good evening.
Evening Brenda.
I was here last month asking for money. Had my little tin can out. Told you I'd be back. We had two demolitions that were slated and we didn't have the funds to take those down. One was 107 Daniel and the other was 304 West Second to a tune of $19,400. Since I saw you, we got the bill back on the abatement. The asbestos test had been sent out. Sampling had been done. The siding on the house on Daniel has asbestos in it and it's going to cost us $6,600. I don't have my glasses on tonight, I apologize. Also, one of the demolitions that we already had in place was 1478 South Straw Town Pike. The demolition contractor has ghosted us. We can't track him down. He hasn't gone back to finish the work. So we were able to put that scope of work out and Merritt came back in at $1,200 to finish seeding and straying that property so that we could get that demolition complete. And then we had those storms that rolled through. And at that time, there was a property on Harrison. It's owned by some folks out of Tennessee. And the entire roof system failed and ended up being held by a bent utility pole on Harrison, just holding it in place. So we were able to contract with Merritt. They happened to be in town taking down one of those unsafe buildings and they were able to get a crew over there immediately and secure that property. Sheets of metal had flown all over the neighborhood. But we got the bill in on that. We hadn't anticipated action like that, but that's our job.
May I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
Was any other property damaged because of the flying roof?
No. No, thankfully not. They worked for three days to get that building secured and the metal down. They didn't take anything with them. They didn't salvage anything. They just took it and was able to secure it so that there was no imminent threat of adjacent property damage or anything like that. The bill came in at $34,500 on that. It was quite, quite a lot of work, quite a lot of equipment that they had to pull in. So we are asking to amend that 19-4 to a total of 61,702.
66.
Thank you, 66. Again, I don't have my glasses.
Did you have a contract with the person on the Straw Town property?
We do. And actually, we've been working with Dustin about, part of that contract is $100 per day once they are out of the timetable for their contract. So we will be seeking measures to go back against them to get some of that money back. Actually, we've never paid them for the service to begin with. But we had already allocated those funds, but we are working on legal action against them. This $1,200 is just to pay Merritt outside of that. We just changed that process so we could be more accountable for the contractors that were going in and the timetable that they were taking to finish things up.
Brenda?
Yes.
What's the timetable on that $34,500? Can you stagger that pay or not?
No. I mean, they've got, they've got their labors and they've got their equipment in it. So that's money that that contractor has already put out.
The good thing about these is we can file a lien against the property then and recoup them.
Yes. October 20th, we go in front of our Board of Building Appeals and we'll ask them for the ability to recoup our funds and be able to bill for those. So we'll send the owners of that building the invoice and at 30-day point, if it's not paid, if the board approves us going back and getting our money. If it's not paid after 30 days, we'll be able to file a lien on the property.
So the appeals board, excuse me, appeals board is October 20th?
October 20th at 2 o'clock. We'll send them notice of how much the bill is. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that and they're just able to pay that. So the money that we're asking for is in our non-reverting unsafe building fund. When we get that money back, it goes right back in to that non-reverting unsafe building fund.
And as I learned today with Ron and Rebecca, this is not taxpayer money.
Correct.
Dustin, this has already been advertised at the amount of $19,400.
Yes, there's been an advertisement for the appropriation. However, we can amend the resolution when it comes time to, there can be a motion to amend the resolution. If that amendment is approved, then it can be voted on. But since we have had an advertisement already for an additional appropriation, it's still an appropriation.
Just wanted to make sure we're good.
Any other questions for me?
Anybody from the audience?
What was the total on that Brenda?
Total is 61,702.66.
Six, six one?
Six, one, seven, oh, two, six, six.
66 cents?
Mm-hmm.
You went for a penny.
I did. I might ask for 67, just for fun.
Want to round that up? 71,603?
Whatever makes you happy. If that makes you happy, I'm good.
As long as you've got it, we'll round it.
Nothing else?
Does anybody in the audience have questions? Brenda? Because it's a public hearing.
Yes.
Just ask if anybody else has questions.
Anybody else have questions?
Thanks Brenda.
You're welcome. Thank you.
There's also an excavator been advertised on the same appropriation. Does anybody have any questions on the excavator?
Does that come out of ARP money?
Yes ma'am.
And it will be used with how many departments?
At least three. Just already said they had interest in using it to save money. On the ARP money, they've already been allotted. They won't have to use it. They'll be able to do the work theirself, am I correct Steve?
So it's parts, golf, and streets?
Streets. All three can utilize it.
Is that a rental or a purchase?
It's an outright purchase. We own it.
Can I get the amount on that?
He came in with one quote, which was under the $92,000.
Who's he?
Cliff. Cliff.
Okay, thank you. What was that again? Did she say?
$92,000. And that's what's listed here under capital outlays?
Yeah.
Steve, I thought that when you had told us about this, that it'd be, you'd said something about $50,000, $55,000?
No, it was $92,000. Once the original came into $84,000 or something like that, once they figured out which equipment they needed.
Okay. I just recall you saying 55 or 50.
No, it was either 92 or 94,000 was the original quote that Cliff had got. But the further he looked into it with a different brand, he ended up getting one for, I think it was 82 or 84,000.
When would we be able to get that, do you know?
Whenever the money's okayed. I think he said then he can place the order. It's available.
Oh, it is available?
He had one the other day. He had a demo the other day. I went and watched him.
Okay.
Steve, I'm assuming for this price, it's actually a mini?
Mini excavator, yes. With all the attachments, buckets, everything that they would need.
Is it the same? We looked at these.
Yeah, we've got some down here.
Okay, this is the, we're closing the public hearing for additional appropriations and we're going to open the public hearing for 2023 proposed budget.
Is Eric going to be here?
No. This is just a consider.
So is, are you saying anything or?
Pardon me?
Is there?
Is she running, point of order, is she running the meeting now or?
I'm just asking a question.
No. Is this the communication for the, if anybody has any questions about the?
Questions are to be directed to the president.
I can ask you questions?
You can ask her.
Does anybody from the audience have any questions over the proposed budget?
So Dustin, help me understand please. I can address any questions to the clerk treasurer?
I, it's a public hearing. I think questions can be asked. I think questions can be answered, whether or not they choose to be answered. Again, I, I guess if you want to ask Patricia directly, then she could ask to have that answered.
What?
Public meeting.
So are you not going, are you choosing not to, are you choosing not to answer questions, Susan?
Susan, do you have the budget that you want to present?
This being the public meeting, I believe it should be open to public for discussion right now.
Okay. Are there any questions from the public about the budget? Yes.
Who prepared the budget?
Would you ask Susan?
Mostly the clerk treasurer.
So the department heads didn't prepare the budgets themselves and submit them?
They prepared, submitted their request to the clerk treasurer.
And then the clerk treasurer puts that together and submits it to the council?
Right.
So are we allowed to ask questions to the city attorney?
Yes.
So when those budget numbers are submitted, who has the authority to arbitrarily change those?
Should be a joint effort between clerk, the mayor, and the council, depending on where the finances lie. And obviously, and communications with the department heads too, based on their needs and wants.
So no one person has the authority just to arbitrarily change it?
No.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, I guess. Go ahead and ask, if that's okay. My first question is for the mayor. Underneath your budget, there is a line item that says other expenses and it's budgeted for $2,000. And I was just curious to know what that is for. It's on page two.
Other services and charges?
Other expenses, $2,000.
Okay, we use that to pay mayor roundtable dues, vehicle repairs, yearly subscriptions, Zoom subscriptions, car rotations, and tires, oil changes, Google storage, various expenses.
Okay. Great.
I do have a flow chart here that you can see later if you would like.
Okay. My other thing is, I just want to bring up that our health, life and dental insurance is budgeted for 1.673 million and that's a big part of our budget. So I know that's something that we'll have to be concerned about in the future and try to figure out ways to decrease our costs, our healthcare costs. Because I think that increased by, how much Susan? Do you know how much it increased by?
It increased this year by 13%.
13%.
But it's based on claims. So it can go up, it can go down.
So I know that's something that we're going to have to kind of watch. We had, the administration had Baker Tilly, who's our financial advisor, do a study, a four-year study that kind of showed what our financial picture looked like for the next four years. And it's pretty bleak. We did, and they did spend $30,000 on that study. And so we're going to have to look at some ways to cut some things in health insurance, not the quality of it, but we might just have to get creative on looking for, I know Susan's kind of looked at other options and she's working with Apex now to try to get us the best prices on things too. So that's one thing I'm concerned about. The sustainability study that Baker Tilly did shows us with negative cash flows, starting in 2022, almost $300,000. Negative cash flows in 2023 of almost $500,000, 2024, $700,000, and almost $1 million in 2025. So we've got some issues coming up.
Dustin, may I ask a, well, I could ask you a question. Well, we have, I mean, this isn't the only time that we can discuss the budget, correct?
No, it's coming back up in the meeting.
Okay, that's right.
It can be opened up and discussed during the meeting.
I just.
This is just for the public to really voice opinions or ask questions.
The thing that I'm really impressed with is I put on Facebook that if you wanted the budget, a copy of the budget, you could email me and request it. There were over 60 people in our community that requested that. And that's really impressive. People want to be involved and understand what's going on and hold us accountable. So that was, I want to thank those who requested that. That was kind of fun. It's important that we all do our civic duty to understand some of these things.
Stephanie?
Would you come up, would you please come up here, Stephanie? I'm sorry.
How do we go about getting a copy of the budget? Last year, when we were here, each of the department heads came up and gave an overview of what they thought was important for their department. They are the subject matter experts for their department. I don't understand why that's not happening this year. And I did send an email requesting to get a copy of the budget like I did last year. And it was difficult getting it last year and I didn't get it this year. So how do we, as a person in this community, get a copy of the budget? And then why aren't the department heads given the opportunity to talk about what they need to effectively run their departments?
I think there are, they all are going to be here tonight and available for questions and presenting. It's on the agenda. Again, this is just the public, this is just the public portion of it is on our agenda tonight. We'll consider it. We won't adopt it till next month. So it'll be discussed tonight and it'll also be discussed at next month's meeting.
So the department heads will be coming up at that time? And then the first question, how do I get a copy of it?
You know what, I got to, I'll go get one for you.
I've got an extra copy right here.
Oh, you do?
Who did you request, to whom did you request? Okay, doesn't matter.
This isn't the adopted budget yet.
What, Patricia?
This isn't the adopted budget yet.
Right.
I don't. Betsy says she has.
Oh, yeah.
All right, what do I have here? Yeah. There you go, my friend.
Betsy, do you have?
There's still another paper.
They're like 87.
Hmm? Patricia, I do, mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Baker, Eric Walsh said that he was going to be here today. He told me that on a phone call. Is there a reason why?
I have not heard that he was going to be here.
He was never scheduled to be here. He couldn't make it if it was scheduled because he has other obligation tonight and he would have to send somebody else that's not really that familiar with our budget.
Do you want to move the microphone closer so we can hear you?
Did you hear me?
Just barely.
Eric Walsh had other commitments tonight. He would have had to send another person that's not familiar with our budget.
Thank you. Stephanie was asking for a second copy.
Betsy, what did we get out of that firm?
We got like a sustainability study, like they looked at this year's proposed budget and they also looked, like forecasted it out for the next four years.
Did they have any recommendations?
They did. They had like five recommendations. I think their overall, my overall take-home message that I got from them was like, you can't have it all. You can't have a bunch of stuff and be able to pay your workers. Good. So it's, you kept to choose between, do you want all these dump trucks? Do you want vehicles or do you want to be able to pay our public safety workers a good wage? So I mean, that's like the big take-home message. But I think they had like five suggestions. I can't find it. I'll definitely give you those five suggestions that they had.
Like Betsy said previously, the insurance was a big one.
Yeah.
And I asked, I asked our clerk treasurer if she had contacted AIM. She said that she had. And when I talked to AIM, the next day or after, she, they said they hadn't talked with anybody since game grace.
I do have something to say about the AIM trust, the medical trust.
Okay.
We cannot do the AIM medical trust without bringing the preutilities in. And preutilities is not interested in. and preutilities is not interested in switching their insurance. And the reason we can't have the AIM trust is because they share a same tax ID as we do.
The gentleman I talked with said that we could do it. It would be tricky, but it could be done.
No.
But that, that is true. That is one thing that Eric Walsh had from Baker Tilly that was part of that $30,000 study is he really encouraged us to really take a long, hard look at our insurance. Because it seemed to be climbing, it seems to be climbing every year. You know, it's based on claims from the previous year. So if you have, you know, somebody that's, you know, been in the hospital for a month or two, that really makes sure price go up the next year.
Okay, it is time for the public hearing for the 2023 proposed budget to close. It is time for the city council meeting of September 12, 2022 to open at 6:00 PM. And I call it to order. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Kathleen Flotho, and the invocation will be led by Pastor Brett Wedding.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we ask you to bless our nation, bless our state, our city. We pray that you'd put your peace upon this meeting tonight, that you would fill the council's heart with wisdom and understanding to make wise choices for the city. We thank you for all of those that work hard to serve our city, and we pray that you would bless our police and fire departments and all of those that work in street sanitation in every department to make this city a great place to live. And we give you thanks for each one, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call. Huh?
Say it louder.
It's okay.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Flotho?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Fahad Ashni?
Here.
And Walsh?
Here.
Okay, reading and correcting your journal.
I'll make a motion that we dispense with the rules and go ahead and approve them, and it says written.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Flotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Fahad Ashni?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
And council liaison communications. Mark?
Oh, the animal control situation, we still got five dogs up at the animal control at this time. I know earlier, two or three weeks ago, they had seven or eight. They got it down to five, but it should be zero at this particular time. Also, I talked to the street department today, and they're still working on the situation. We had all those trees that fell down on the northeast part of town, Oakdale area. So they're still trying to get that taken care of. And they've, plus they're one man short as well at this particular time. So basically, that's all I got, but those are the two things that need to be taken care of.
Do you mind if I report on some of the parks and golf things? We've been working with, Mark and I have been working with the golf course especially, and we'll talk more about that, but we're going to, Sandy Chittam has offered to work with us from tourism to create a marketing plan. And with some of the city funds, we're hoping to have tourism and and whatnot chamber help us create a marketing plan for the Civic Center, golf course, and aviation. So that's all I have to say.
All right. The Civic Center was closed in August for some improvements, and Rebecca sent me pictures of it. It looks great. They really updated the paint color. It looks good. And then we're also having a fundraiser on this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00 at the amphitheater. It's Time Travelers are playing. That's all I have.
I have nothing to report.
Just on my end, just a reminder that the county budget hearings will be held in October, the third Tuesday, 7:00 o'clock.
I have no reports, but I would like to commend the utilities and the street department. During this storm, they were out there slaving away, and they did a great job.
The building department was also out there. I know Brenda made a trip, and Ron was out there, too. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business? There is none. New business? Request by Brooke Robinson on behalf of Miami County Leadership Class to present their recommendation for the consultant to do the new parks plan.
I'm not Brooke, but hopefully it'll be, it'll be okay.
I'll see.
Thanks, Tom, for that vote.
You would rather have Brooke.
First of all, thanks for, again, Jim Tid with Miami County Economic Development. Thanks for putting us on the agenda this evening. Several months back, we came before the council after we had talked with the Parks Board about a vision for pickleball courts on the splash pad along the Riverwalk. Well, as you know, the pickleball court is under construction, and hopefully some folks will be playing pickleball on it yet this year. But came about with the splash pad, and one of the things that we realized was before we were able to pursue a grant through the Department of Natural Resources to help up to 50% of the cost to put a splash pad in, our parks plan needed to be updated. It has to be within five years. And so anyway, the Economic Development Board, we're working with the Parks Board. We drafted what was called a request for qualifications. We sent that out. We advertised it in the paper. As a result of that solicitation, we got four proposals in. And so once we got those, Brooke and I were in the office, and we were kind of figuring out, okay, well, what's the best way to try to go through a process to select the best qualified candidate to make a recommendation? And both Brooke and Heidi Wright with the Community Foundation have established a great program with Miami County Leadership. And so Brooke and I were talking, and so happened that week they were doing a segment on conflict resolution. And we're like, oh, okay. This will be, this will be a good test. So anyway, we took the proposals out, presented them to the Miami County Leadership Class, basically asked them to do an evaluation. They broke up into teams. We asked them to do an evaluation, and basically they came back with a recommendation. And I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'm going to let them go through that process. But they do have a recommendation that hopefully the city council will agree with. And so at this time, I'm going to invite Stacy, and I think Carson may be coming up to do the presentation, so.
Good evening. I think some of you already know me. I'm Stacy McBride. I am a part of this wonderful group, the Miami County Leadership Group, and I'm coming from the YMCA as the transit director. My beautiful assistant is Carson Ray. He's really just here for moral support. We were not able to get the PowerPoint to work for you guys that he put together. A beautiful PowerPoint for you, though. And I've given you guys the four proposals. So like he expressed, we were given the job to evaluate these four proposals and decide who best fit the needs for Miami County. What we did was we broke up into four different groups where we, we met individually, and we each, each group looked at all four proposals. And we decided to rank them on what we felt was, was the best to worst. The four proposals were with HWC, Cornerstone, American Structure Point, and Thomas P. Miller. Each group, after we decided the rankings, then we came together and we presented it between, before the whole group. And it just so happened that it was a unanimous decision of who we felt was the best option. Everybody really agreed on that. But first, I want to go through and tell you what we thought of each proposal, and we'll start with who we ranked in fourth place. And that was Thomas P. Miller. Their presentation was okay, but it definitely was not as impressive as the others. They focused a lot more on strategic planning and research. They really didn't have great creativity, and they didn't show a lot of experience with similar projects to what we were wanting to do. So we put them in fourth place and moved on to American Structure Point that we rated as third place. They did have previous experience, but it was more with like walkways and things like that, less with splash pads. We really wanted to find a group that, that had a lot of experience with splash pads because they're kind of their own unique animal there, and we want somebody that knows exactly what they're doing. They, they didn't, they still weren't that creative and not as impressive as some of the others came, came up to. So the last two, second place and first place, they was, it was very close. They both were really good presentations. They both had a lot of experience with splash pads, and they could, as you can see in the proposal, there's a lot of pictures, really impressive stuff. They could have used a little better marketing, but, and a little bit more of a community touch. But, but they really, we feel like they could have done the job just fine as well because they really were still pretty impressive. But we really felt that HWC stood out above all of the others. They had a lot of experience with splash pads and, in communities that are similar to ours. So we saw a lot of communities of, with our size and, and that are just really similar to our kind of, you know, you see a lot of huge city kind of projects. Well, we're not a huge city. So we liked that we saw in them smaller communities that were similar to us, that they have a lot of experience working with them. One of the things that was really important to us is that they care about our community. So they go out and they actually elicit the opinions of the community. So they want to know, what are your thoughts? What are your ideas? What are your opinions on things? Most of these guys don't do that, but they take pride in doing that and really caring what our community is wanting and what to make it a really good fit for our community. They had a lot of good creative examples of how they've worked with communities in the past. They really love that, getting that community buy-in, which obviously we need. One huge thing is they will help us to write the grants. So, you know, that was enormous to us because they can help us get the funding, not just make the projects happen, but to make the funding happen to, you know, bring it all together.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Is that the DNR grant and others, or?
Yes, DNR.
Jim Tid question. And so one of the big final things that we were impressed with is that they didn't just want to work on this current proposal. They immediately gave ideas of what they think are future plans for us, and they want to be a long-term partner with us to grow our community. So we felt that that was very impressive. You want to, you want to work with somebody that isn't just into the current idea, but really sees a future for our community in making us better and buying into our community like we do. And so we feel that they would be the best partner for us in this. And so I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to our thoughts, and we really hope that you, that you will listen and, as we recommend, HWC for the Miami County Parks Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
We worked with them at the revitalization.
They did our downtown.
Yeah, downtown plan. They're great.
That was another great, great thing, because they've worked directly with Jim.
Patricia.
On the other primary plans.
Patricia, you might want to make a small announcement about Carson.
Okay. Yes, I would like to welcome Carson Ray to the Parks Board. He was sworn in today. Welcome.
Thank you, Stacy. Thanks, Carson. Again, I, I would just like to recognize, I think most, if not all of the members, they're taking half of the second row, but almost three quarters of the third row. But if the leadership class could please stand and kind of, you can't, you can't pass up their shirts and stuff. But anyway, I've had a couple of opportunities to be involved in this program, and this is the first class. There was a prior leadership class or leadership effort years ago by Bruce Embry. But this is a new approach in leadership that, again, is through the Community Foundation, and Brooke, through our organization, is the, kind of the head person involved in this. So I just want to say that, participating with these folks, I'm very optimistic about the future of Peru and Miami County, and would encourage employers, there's going to be a class every year, so encourage employers or anybody that would like to take part in this. It's a great opportunity. So with that, I guess where we need to go from here is I'm looking for, I guess, Dustin, if I could, ask for a motion to accept the recommendation of the leadership class and engage with HWC engineering. This, we do not know cost yet, but the, this would be our preferred consultant, and we would take it from here and negotiate a cost for the study and then bring that, bring that back to you for final approval and approval of a contract.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the Miami County proposed parks plan.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Flotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Fahad Ashni?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Do you know when you'll have those figures?
Probably within the next 30. We'll have something for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Because we have to get on this because we have to have our applications submitted by January.
Okay. Thank you.
For the splash pad.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Ordinance number 24, 2022, and ordinance establishing salaries and wages of the civil, city employees and appointees for the year 2023.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 24, 2022.
My second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Flotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Fahad Ashni?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Okay, discussion? Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to add back the Civic Center event coordinator. She was left off.
We don't pay her.
Pardon?
We don't pay her.
I know, but she needs to be added on there, that she's there.
And a weight ordinance?
Yes, the form of compensation could be classified as the residency committee.
So are we making? Okay.
Did we do that last year?
And that's Rebecca?
Yes.
And she's the director as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you will notice also, there was a typo for the City Attorney Administrative Assistant.
Oh, yeah, it should be another zero.
Right. It should be 7,000 instead of 700. It should be 7,000 instead of 700. And on page four, I am proposing that under number six, we scratch off non-exempt.
I'm sorry, scratch off what?
Non-exempt.
First word of?
Okay.
That's been in every wage ordinance with how, why it's a reasoning.
Because there are certain people that work overtime that do not get compensation. Exempt employees do not get compensation except as compensatory time unless they are awarded compensatory time. And if you have non-exempt only there, you will not be able to give them compensatory time?
This is through state. The state decides who's non-exempt. We don't.
Is there an Indiana code that I can reference on that? Do you know, Dustin or?
I mean, the Fair Labor Standard Act delineates what, what is an exempt employee. However, I believe what Patricia is proposing is just stating that all civil city employees would be entitled to comp time for any work over the eight hours in a work, or any work performed above and beyond the eight hours in a workday. Now, I don't think she's asking to change a classification of the employee. At least that's what I took from that.
Correct.
So do we have to make any of these amendments tonight since we're bringing it back up to consider? So could this be things that we think about?
It was brought up when we actually voted to pass it in October. Yes.
Yes.
Dustin, can I? Mayor, can I take a, a moment? I need to, any break for just one moment, please? I need to talk to Officer Ullery. Is that, is that okay? Can we give me a?
Do what? We don't. Decide first?
I mean, we, people have excused themselves from a meeting. I don't think we've really stopped a meeting. I mean, we could, if we were to stop a meeting, but.
If we take a break out, talk with you, it's, it's kind of important. So what do I do? Do I step away or excuse myself?
I, that's what I would do.
Okay. All right.
Right, you should. You may take a break if you wish.
Well, I think she said walked off. It's no different than.
Do you need to take a, do you need to take a recess?
Yeah, I suppose it might be a good time to do that when you, five-minute recess.
We can take a five-minute recess if you wish.
Sounds good to me. Sounds all right. Let's do it.
Okay. I propose a five-minute recess.
I appreciate your patience with me.
Stacy, do you want these back?
Patricia, Mayor, I, everybody, I appreciate your patience. Tom, thank you for your patience.
I have none.
Are you guys done with your books? Yeah.
Oh, you, that you're going to say something. You're just.
Stacy, thank you. I, I apologize. Do we, where do we need to get going again?
They, they went ahead and took five minutes.
Oh, okay, I apologize. I'm going to say I apologize about 10 more times.
Kathleen, are we ready to reshoot?
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, I'll call the, meeting back to order. Ready for discussion?
Who is the maintenance person?
Maintenance person?
Fritz, I think they call him.
That would be Fitz.
Fitz.
What's his last name?
Correll?
Nathan Correll.
Thank you.
He does quite a bit.
I beg your pardon?
He does a lot of work in this building.
Over and above.
Ron, do you want to come up and discuss the wage or do you want to wait till later? Okay, thank you.
So the wage that you have for the building department is not what was submitted. It's actually higher. So we're talking about trying to find ways to cut in the insurance and things like that. I had proposed that we eliminate or suspend one of the secretary bookkeepers' wages and then utilize a portion of that money to bring the remaining two employees up, in the building department, up to the same level as other members on the, in other departments. By doing that, I can't figure all the different nuances with the taxes and things like that. But we should be, the city should realize a savings of somewhere between 25 and $30,000 a year by eliminating that one position or suspending that one position. That would be one way to eliminate one person, or at least one, one person or a family on the insurance. It's not firing anybody, it's just not replacing someone that's no longer here, so.
So essentially, from what I've understood from talking with you, Rebecca, that you would, we would eliminate the code enforcement secretary bookkeeper?
Correct.
Rebecca would become code enforcement officer?
Yes.
Okay. So we could take the, whatever the insurance per, all that kind of thing is for, one employee could be gone.
Right.
There's a savings.
Correct.
And, okay, so Rebecca would become code enforcement officer, which was Bill Gorto?
Correct.
Okay. The zoning ministry would stay Haley. And Brenda is the building secretary bookkeeper?
Yes.
Okay.
And the way they worked it out with their, we've been doing this for quite some time already. So the way they worked it out is they worked out the workflow, assumed, different ones assumed different responsibilities and things. So there's no doubt that they're able to sustain the workload. And because of that, I believe they need to be fairly compensated for that. So not asking them to be made more than other. There was a time a few years back in the clerk treasurer's office where they basically did the same thing. They eliminated one position, the remaining people picked up the slack. They got a, a portion of that salary. The remaining part of the salary went back to the city so that it, as far as into the general fund, it didn't come out of the general fund anymore. Now, like you say, those numbers, I don't have it to the penny simply because I can't figure all the different things on the taxes and, and the benefit package. But it's roughly somewhere between 25 and $30,000 a year that we would be saving as a city.
And that was with the information you provided, that was done with the clerk treasurer's office in 2018, August?
The, the.
The changes?
The one in the clerk treasurer's office, yes, I believe it was 2018.
So wasn't it in the budget hearing that we were in that we had discussed this? And then you were going to do what the police officers did, just left that position there and check it out for a while instead of eliminating a position and the workload increases, we can't put another person on salary? So I thought when we had left that thing, we were going to leave it the way it is and not do that and work on another way to get raises as opposed to eliminating a position?
Correct. When I initially submitted the budget request, I did not eliminate that secretary bookkeeper position. I put it as funded as zero. Therefore, the position would still be there at any time if the council needed to.
But the money wouldn't be though.
But there'd be no money for that person. So it wouldn't be a, we would still be realizing the savings. So whether the position is eliminated or just not funded, the end result would be the same for the building department. And then if we, things pick up and our, you know, our city continues to grow and things like that, there's monies for a temporary blip, there's monies in the, in the budget already for professional services. So a part-time person can be put on for just a couple of projects. If things continue to grow, obviously we'd be generating more funds with the permits and things of that nature. So a substantial portion of the building department's budget, we get that from building permits, fees. We get it from code enforcement, things of that nature. So if the volume of work picked up that would require bringing a person back on, whether it be temporary, part-time, there'd also be additional funds coming in to help offset that. So as far as leaving the position, yes, you're right. I, I'm fine with that. However, I've talked with some of the other council members and they assured me that if we did away with the position, it might be cleaner to do it that way. And then you could always bring that position back if you wanted to. So either way, I'm okay with that part either way. My goal is to just, again, save city taxpayer dollars by doing away with the position, whether it's non-funded or leave, you know, doing away with it completely. And then fairly compensating then the, the remaining two employees, which will help retain them, keep the experience and expertise there and still get the job done. Any other questions?
I just want to applaud you and your team for doing all this work and helping me understand it better.
I would have to say it's the team more than me, so they.
Well, this was excellent. You know, I mean, Rebecca should be a lawyer. Not really, but.
I have a couple of concerns. Like I would want the position taken out because I think it's too confusing. Because even this time around with the police, you know, where like everybody was like, well, Miles said that it was back in and we don't have Miles and, you know, we can't ask. So I think it's confusing. So I think it would be much cleaner and I'd be more for taking it out. I definitely think your staff needs greater compensation for what they do. But that being said, like, I feel like one of the biggest flaws in this administration is that we continue to hire friends and family for positions and then things don't work out. Like Haley Hewitt's fiance was hired for this position, didn't last more than like a week. Then adopted son, our friend Simpson, was hired and he's really close with the mayor, didn't last more than six weeks. I think this is a chronic problem with this administration where we hire friends and family and things don't work out. And that is a big waste of taxpayer money.
I wouldn't argue that neither one of those two worked out. And that's part of it. It's, it's also difficult to find qualified people. And in Rebecca's case, she has shown a, a great interest in doing it. She's been doing on-the-job training already. So this is not something that we just thought up yesterday. We've been doing this for quite some time now. So she's become a member of IABO, which is the Indiana Association of Building Officials. There's training later on this week, training next week. So there's a lot of on-the-job training, plus in today's age, which doesn't, I don't like it, but there's always FaceTime. So she's, if she goes out on something, she FaceTimes me. So it's the same as I'm there in a lot of ways, so.
I have no doubt that Rebecca would do a good job. I mean, she's done an excellent job at the Civic Center. But I do think that that is a problem with the city. And we just paid for the software that we're supposed to be able to advertise on Indeed or whatever. But I don't feel like we look for qualified candidates. We just take whoever.
Sure.
So, or we take a friend or a family member. And I think we need to really look for who would be good candidates in those positions.
Well, I think, I think Rebecca will be a good candidate for this position. And I think Brenda's doing a great job as well, picking up extra slack, so.
Yeah, she does too.
So Rebecca would take on some added?
To what?
Both, both parties would take on some added and duties.
Yes, they've both already taken on added duties. Rebecca's taken on building inspections and plus more code enforcement inspections. The biggest shift, I guess, is some of her clerical work that she did had been transferred over to Brenda. Brenda does a few inspections to help out as well on some of the, our lingering cases, if you will, unsafe and things like that. But primarily, she's in the office doing that stuff. Rebecca's doing a lot more field work than she did before to help up that. But they've, they've been doing this now, like I say, since last year, pretty much without stop. And, and they've been doing a good job, so.
Ron, what did you submit?
I'm sorry?
What did you submit?
What I submitted was the secretary bookkeeper, I submitted one at 41,525, one at zero. And then the full-time code enforcement was 41,525. And by having that one funded at zero, like I said, that ended up saving, I think it was 20,800 or something along those lines. And then I guesstimated somewhere around $5,000 for the, the package for the benefits and things like that. Again, I'm, I'm not privy to those numbers, so it was just kind of a educated guess.
So you're not privy to those numbers?
I, I don't have them, I guess I should say. I could probably get them, I didn't get them. I could probably get them, I didn't get them.
Do you know, Susan, when we have an employee, what is their benefit package, like, starting out?
Roughly around $20,000.
Okay.
So, it's actually better savings?
Better savings.
Closer to $40,000 savings, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Another, Pat Mayer, I'm sorry, I apologize. Did you turn in, did he turn this, these numbers, the original numbers into you? The 41, where did you turn those into?
So, we-
Your wages?
Had a meeting, as, as he was saying, had a meeting. I went over and filled out the numbers, submitted them to the clerk treasurer's office. I think I gave them to Lori. Sometime later, got them back on my desk, I found them, and the numbers had been, the numbers that I received weren't the numbers that I had submitted. So, I whited it out and made the corrections and submitted it back to the clerk treasurer's office.
Correction. He submitted those numbers in the first original budget hearing.
Oh, okay, so the second time's when I gave it to Lori?
So, then it was told no. And he was said, according to Patricia, the Building Department is going to submit their own restructuring. This was on Friday, August the 12th. I asked for final wages and got nothing, so I said I assume the Building Department is 3%, and I got nothing back. No, no, nothing was ever submitted after that hearing. She said there was going to be a plan submitted, nothing.
The day that you told me that they needed to be turned in is the day that I did it, which was August 22nd, 2022.
I got nothing.
When I submitted it to staff at the, the clerk treasurer's office, so.
Well, we can make an amendment.
Where they went from there, I have no idea.
What he submitted was a whiteout, that he has no authority whatsoever to whiteout after we've already discussed it in an email, what to put in there.
So, they did receive the one that I corrected? Okay. Anything else?
It was not a correction.
We can make an amendment? I would need a motion to amend it.
I thought we were going to put all those amendments together and bring it back up at the next meeting.
So, that would be my request for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, what, what can we do about that, Dustin? Because the budget's already been submitted, right? So, we can only go down, we can't go up, so we'd have to take that position out. I know we're good to do that, but then how could, we'd have to go in at January and reappropriate?
Well, the way we, sorry, let's interrupt.
That's fine.
The way we could do this and to make this work is you could amend the wage ordinance, pay those, the funds are still in the budget for wages. As of January 1 or that first meeting, we could amend our, you could appropriate, again, I don't have the Building Department's actual budget in front of me. Depending on the line items and how those are coded, you could make an amendment or appropriate or reappropriate those funds. Because it would be a savings, it wouldn't be adding to the budget to change it at this point as well, so.
Okay. On January?
Well-
Or before?
Even before, because it doesn't change or add to the budget. But I think it'd be safest just to amend, if it's what the council wants, amend the wage ordinance, and then appropriate funds accordingly at the start of the year.
Okay.
So, wait until January to amend this?
And actually, once the budget's passed, we wouldn't necessarily have to wait till January to, to make those changes. It's just, the budget would need to be adopted first.
Because it's a savings of, because?
That's not the main reason. The main reason we could do that is because we're not adding to the budget. I mean, you guys could amend, amend it as presented, it just creates a few more hurdles doing it that way, when we're not adding, it's not like the council's going to say, okay, well, now we need an extra $40,000 to fund this position. No, actually, when you take away some of the benefit package for that third, our fourth employee saves money. Again, I would just reappropriate the funds accordingly after the budget's adopted, since we're not asking for more.
Thank you for your explanation. Do you understand that, Ron? And that, okay, that it'll probably be amended in January? Great, thank you.
Since we're just considering this, we will just move on?
The golf, I want to talk with the, the golf department. Gary?
Sorry. Sorry, Gary.
How are we doing?
We're doing all right.
Beautiful night, we're getting some rain.
We're going to get, you, you got rain?
I got to shut off my pump.
That's good.
So, Gary, that's part of my concern, is you have been working how many days without a day off? How many months?
Oh, it's been rough, last three months with the water. When it starts to get hot, June, July, and August, three toughest months of the year for me. And it's just been tough because of the irrigation, and that's it, bottom line. Irrigation's old, got to get water out there to keep the grass alive, to keep customers up there, so.
So, in, most of our, Gary, most of our part-time workers, you okay?
Seasonal help?
Yes. Most of our seasonal help in the city are $15 to $16, supervisor's $16, but yours are at $12?
Yeah, mine are still at $12, yep.
So, we need to rectify that.
Yep, and me and Susan talked a little bit about that going forward for next year. I just feel like, you know, I got like high school kids that I hire in that I don't think are worth the $12 sometimes, you know, where I got some guys that have been there for 10 to 12 years, making the same, you know, where they should be. They've gotten one pay increase in my five years that I've been there, and I don't know how many before that, but, so it's just some things like that. And I think the way Susan explained it, we should be able to work that out, so.
Raising the 15 to the $15?
Getting a couple of guys at maybe 15 or something, you know, and then, and then paying like my, my high school seasonal help, a little less, and maybe some of the help up in the clubhouse, you know, that, so. I think, I think we'll be okay. Well, I know we will be.
Just, Dustin, how do we respect Gary's work and protect him from being abused with all these overtime hours? I mean, no days off, what do we do? How do we help him?
Well, he, he mentioned comp time, right?
Comp time?
I had a question on that, though. Do I have to use that within that pay period? Do you know? Because I think, that's what I was told, I think, by the last administration, maybe.
You can bank up to, see, that's a typo, need to be corrected. Yeah, I believe you can bank up to 60 hours. When that's used, I don't think it calls for it in the wage ordinance, how soon or how-
I've got it upstairs.
Because if I understand correctly, Gary, it's really because of the problems with the irrigation system. It's nearly impossible for you to take off time during the summer, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Especially, you know, this time of the year. I mean, we're getting a little bit cooler days, but like I said, June, July, and August, it's, you know, I'm there at 4:00 in the morning, trying to water because I got sprinkler heads, and we're all aware of it, got sprinkler heads that don't work, got wires that, you know, aren't hooked up out there, satellites that are busted up, pipes are 30 years old. And then in them three months, I can't do nothing else but try to water. Well, you, you know, we've had a really tough, tough season, third worst that I've seen in a long time, so.
Weather, ice, drought, drought.
Oh, yeah.
So, I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to, because of your neglect, that we've neglected you. I don't know, in some situations, why people work for our city.
Passion. And I don't think it's just me, I know other guys in other departments, it's, it's passion. I grew up here, love the city, love, love McQuanip Park, so, but it's, it's getting tougher, getting tougher.
You know, the thing that, that I've seen with you and straight Adam and Ron and others, you guys just work without the department heads or the departments in this city, you guys have been running the city. I just want to thank you. I mean, that's not, that's not enough, but, I mean, we got, you know, police, fire, Adam's team, you know, working overtime, and, so.
And I'm fine, if I could just get my comp time, you know, if I don't have to make it up in two, it's almost impossible for me to at this time of the year.
Right.
I can't take days off this time of the year, which is expected in my position, but, well, I was told that, you know, two, I said, I can't do that. So, am I just losing them? Do I get to use them, like Dustin said, no, kind of whenever?
Where are we on labor laws with, with what's?
He's overtime exempt. I mean, at the end of the day, that's why we offer comp time to those overtime exempt employees to make up for that, because we can't pay him overtime. So, the employees we can't pay overtime to, they get comp time.
I have a question. How do you determine which employees get comp time and which ones don't?
It's a good question.
Yeah, who gets comp time, who gets overtime?
State guidelines exempt, people that are appointed by the mayor do not get comp time. A specific example they used was the mayor's secretary or any department head. They are non-exempt from, they are the ones that cannot have comp time. So, whether you change the language in there or not, it's still, they cannot legally-
Right.
-get comp time.
Yep.
Does that come from the state board of accounts?
That came from that lady you were on the phone call with me, that laborer from Ice Miller, I can't remember who we were on that conference call with. And then she sent that information.
I know what conversation you're talking about, and I'm trying, I'll pull that up, but I, I think we were talking about actual, like, there's a delineation there. What's her name? But we can discuss that.
Gary, we'll, we'll find an answer before this gets passed, or?
Mm-hmm.
I also would like, Jason, would you come up, Simpson, please? So, you transferred from the Building Department?
Yes, and for the record, I'd like to state that I am no relation to Miles.
Are you a close friend?
I helped him during the primaries.
How long did you stay in that position?
Six to eight weeks.
And then that was when I lost mine.
He lost his assistant, asked me to come on board.
When you transferred from the Building Department to golf, what was your understanding? That it was a lateral move?
Yes, ma'am.
And what are you being, you were paid with the, at the Building Department, how much, 34?
Roughly.
And you're getting paid now 31?
Roughly.
So, Dustin, if I'm understanding correctly, a lateral move?
It wasn't a lateral move in the form of wages, lateral in form of benefits and whatnot, is my understanding of what was supposed to take place. That way, there would be no lapse or breakdown in his 90 days for the benefits.
Seniority for purposes of longevity wasn't broke?
That was my understanding.
Were you told something else?
Not to, to the best of my recollection, no.
Gosh, you should be in front of the Congress in a hearing, not to the best of my rec- Sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm just-
After the statement that was made earlier, I-
What I'd like to do, because we got to keep this meeting moving, I'd like the people that have needs and concerns, give us concrete, what is your request from the city? Okay, so we can keep kind of moving forward. So, what, in, in, in concrete terms, what are you asking from the city? I mean-
Yeah, he hasn't asked anything. I'm, yeah, I'm asking the questions, but, yeah, I just-
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering if the questions are kind of skewed, or are they, are they appropriate, are they significant? I mean, so, you know.
Over, massive overtime and continued overtime working is not considered?
I understand that, okay. I mean, I suppose everybody would like to, you know, be paid for overtime.
Okay, so here's, here's my feeling about today's meeting. This is one of the most important meetings in November, October, that we have. And if it takes three hours, four hours, I think that we ought to honor these, respect these gentlemen.
No, I agree. I just would like maybe for you to restate, this is what we need, what we want to, you know, to cover operating cost or whatever, to help, you know, your department, you know, maybe to distill it a little bit, if there's a way to do that.
We, I think we do have meetings, don't we, for this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll work on the, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Do the unions want to be heard? Police, fire?
Hi. At this point in time, the FOP really has nothing to say, you guys are moving along, so.
Yeah.
That's the statement from the police right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other departments want to address the wages? Okay.
Are we ready to move on? Move on to the next one, then? Patricia?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 25, 2022. This is ordinance establishing the 2023 salaries of all elected officials in the city of Peru.
Second.
Rock on.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Gorto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Piotr Dachman?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
On this, on the common counsel, it's not bi-weekly. Five, 570, bi-weekly? That's monthly. In fact-
Pardon?
It with all, with the, it's not bi-weekly, it's bi-monthly on the salaries, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Dustin? Be bi-monthly?
The mayor is bi-weekly, the clerk treasurer's bi-weekly, the city judge is bi-weekly.
I know, isn't it supposed to be bi-monthly twice?
It's monthly.
Well, that's-
I, I guess I-
That's what?
It's used off the template from last year, so, yeah, there may be, yeah, that-
We can work that out later.
Yeah, you amend that, make that bi-monthly.
It's monthly. Just monthly. Just monthly.
I'm happy that we're not doing any raises for any elected officials. So, the mayor's not getting a raise, clerk's not getting a raise, common counsel isn't, but is the city judge?
No.
They're not getting a raise either? Okay, good. I just wanted to double-check on that, I thought she was.
No, she got a little bit of one last year, she asked for nothing.
Okay, great, super.
Okay. Are we ready?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 26, 2022. This is an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates.
Second. Second.
Roca?
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Saad Ashni?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes.
Any discussion?
So this is the place, right, where the budget can be discussed? And if there's anybody, any department heads, like Stephanie was asking about, I think, did Stephanie leave? She was asking to hear from the different department heads about their budgeting requests, but I don't see that she's here anymore.
Yeah. Better debt service.
So I have a question with, um, the financial consulting, the fifty thousand dollars for Baker Tilly did, sorry, we are, we paid for the strategic plan as well, or is that within the fifty thousand dollars?
This is for next year.
I'm sorry, my mind is a little lost. So will the fifty thousand dollars be all?
Used for whatever financial planning comes up next year, yes.
And whatever financial planning comes up next year? Didn't we just do, didn't, wasn't that just the three-year report done?
That was the three-year report, yeah, but there's still other stuff that it'd be used for.
We use Baker Tilly throughout the year.
Yeah.
Do, do they do bank reconciliations each month?
No.
They don't?
No.
Okay, what do they do?
Anything that we need to come up, like those employee meetings I held.
Okay.
A lot of budget stuff. There's a lot of things that they do. Take your phone calls, that costs.
Yeah. The fifteen thousand dollars on three sixty, Keystone maintenance updates?
That's our software. That's what we have to pay every year for our software.
Okay. Where is the, the month, the annual money that we're paying for the dot neo.gov? Or what, what was it, Steve?
The neo.gov.
Neo.gov?
That would be in the Board of Works budget because it's for the city.
Okay. Is that being used?
They're still on train.
They're still, they're still setting it up.
It's like an eight-month process.
I have a question. Um, has to do with litigation services, and I know Dustin, we budget fifteen thousand for you in there, in the budget, and I know you, last time I met with you, you said you'd only used four hundred dollars out of that so far. So I know it's budgeted again for fifteen thousand, and just wanted to see if you thought that that was appropriate, given last year you just used four hundred.
So there's been years in the past where it's gotten closer to that amount. I think it's better, because if it's not spent, it goes back to the general fund. It's hard to know what the city might get itself into next year. I, I don't want to be the type that has to come back and ask for an appropriation for those. I think fifteen's a comfortable number where it's not too much, taken away from other departments or anything like that, that, and again, if it's not used, it goes right back.
I know that you brought up some concern that we're going to have to get an attorney that specializes in environmental law, and I noticed that that's not in our budget, and that's probably going to be a great deal of money. And so where, where would that come from?
So that would fall under, generally that falls under the mayor's budget, under professional services. Anytime we've had bond counsel or anything like that out of the city's budget, usually that's where it's taken out of. Whether or not that's funded at that point to the amount sufficient, I can't call.
No, there's nothing in there.
There's nothing.
There's nothing in there that would cover something like that. So I, I would recommend, you know, if we know this expense is coming up, that we be prepared and we have a line item in our budget to cover that. And I believe that the mayor's office is known about this lawsuit since February, correct? And the council just found out just like less than a month ago, and so it had had time to have gotten a line item in the budget.
So I would clarify that it's not a lawsuit at this point. We've just been put on notice, I.D.M., which is why we've turned it over to our insurance and looking back to try to find every insurance policy we have until back last week of recall, which thankfully a conversation with.
And there are mistakes in it.
He, right, he told me that we were dumping back there in the fifties.
I was there.
Our records indicated seventy-three was like, when we dumped there, and that was the only time. So I don't know if there was an interruption, but nonetheless, I don't think the city will have to pay anything out of pocket substantially, and I think we would be reimbursed from our ultimate insurance, our coverage. So if that, the notice I sent you guys would give you guys a heads up that, hey, we might have to front something, but we should be able to reimburse ourselves, or get reimbursed from the insurance company for our cost.
I don't remember reading that. I just remember the email that you sent said it was going to, we were going to have to get an environmental attorney. It was going to be expensive, and that you listed off several solutions to the problem, and both, all of them were in the millions.
Well, from I.D.M., the remediation, not the attorney fees, but.
No, no, I realize, not the attorney fees. But, but I don't remember seeing anything in there that stated that insurance would cover all of those expenses.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're.
That's what you're hoping for? Okay.
Uh, Board of Works, I don't know, Susan or Ron would like to answer this. It's promotion of city. It's line three ninety.
Board of Works is the mayor's budget.
Yes.
Board of Works is the mayor's budget control. Be directing your question to the mayor.
That?
Three ninety.
The sixteen thousand on three ninety?
Ten thousand of it is going to Kris Kendal Mart. Six thousand is for incidentals, I believe, that is used throughout the city, for the city.
Thank you.
Sometimes.
Promotion of the city, is that what she's talking about?
Yes, promotion of the city.
Correct. Like at Christmas time, I think Miles bought cookies for open house, things like that.
Right. You buy your toilet paper and things like that.
Well, no, I'm not out of that.
No? No?
No.
What'd you say?
I'm not.
Who buy our toilet paper?
Toilet paper at a promotion of the city?
I don't know where you get that, where you get it from.
That would be out of supplies.
Supplies, okay. Promotion of the city.
There's, there's two other promotions of the city.
There's ten thousand dollars from four hundred. The former tree assistance, ten thousand.
I think we left that in there, correct, Steve? What was your?
I don't have the.
You guys switched it to promotion of the city.
Yeah, when we met with Pat.
When I was not here.
Not in that original meeting, no.
Tree assistance. When Betsy, Steve, and I believe Pete and you were together, you switched it to promotion of the city. It was tree assistance.
Underseeded, there's a hundred thousand dollars and forty-five thousand dollars for promotion of the city. I'm, I'm trying to find it. I talked with, I talked with Jim Ted this, earlier today. Yeah, it's, um, we pay, it is underseeded. Thirty-five thousand dollars, we pay our dues or to thirty-five thou, thirty-five thousand to Makita. Then the eighty thousand dollar city development, regional planning, we pay. Jim, would you mind coming up here, please? Where is he?
He's back there.
Yeah, I can't see Dustin, he's in my glasses.
So.
Page are you on, Kathleen?
I beg your pardon?
What page are you on?
Um, eighteen.
Where?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you.
You're welcome. So when we talked this earlier today, the city development and regional planning is part of it, eighty-five hundred dollars approximately goes to North Central Indiana Planning Council, correct?
That is what I'm assuming is under regional planning. The county pays the dues in total for the city and the county, and then by interlocal agreement, then the city pays the county eighty-five hundred or reimburses them. And I believe that's come out of regional planning. I would assume that's where it comes out of. I don't know.
Seven ninety.
I lost track of what the question was.
I beg your pardon? What, I didn't hear what you said, Susan.
What was your exact question, please?
I'm trying to find out what, where the eighty thousand dollars goes. Eighty-five hundred of it is to.
The only thing that I'm assuming is eighty-five hundred is the city's reimbursement back to the county for dues under the Regional Planning Council.
There's thirty-five thousand for your annual contribution already in there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about that.
Okay.
I'm talking about, I think the question is, the next one down, city development and regional planning.
Right, you use that like for feasibility studies and things like that.
Right.
So we left it in there in case something come up.
Right.
I mean, this is not an exact science. This is called a budget estimate.
I, I, I don't have any question. I was just asked if I knew where the county contribution was, or the city's contribution was from.
We kind of leave things in there in case something comes up, not specifically.
And that's wise planning. That's wise planning. I just remember.
Planning in case.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm still a little shell shocked.
It's better to have it and not have it, and something come up and he need it.
And, and while I'm up here, I was going to say back there that I do appreciate, and I know, Steve, we've worked on this as well with the promotion of the city, as far as having, uh, even, I know at a time when you're struggling with budgets and those kind of things, it's hard to think about festivals and events and those kind of things in your downtown. But the downtown, those kind of festivals and events is what brings people to the community, to spend money in the community that helps sustain our existing businesses and such. So I really do appreciate the promotion of the city in that as well.
There is, there is talk of having the council form a committee.
Yes.
To be able to apply, to be able to spend that. That's just not going to be a cart and lunch.
Understand.
If anybody comes up with a handout. They will have to present it to a committee, and then it will be decided by them whether or not that money can be spent out of there for that, for that purpose.
Is that the eighty thousand or is it the?
No, that's the hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand? Okay, so you said that Kris Kendal Mart, this is.
It's out of the.
Board of Works.
Board of Works.
Um, so.
Kris Kendal Mart in the Board of Works.
Okay.
Okay, so forty-five thousand dollars for downtown revitalization, that is?
That's RDP. That's rediscovered downtown.
That's what we send to them every year.
That's for the facade grant program and to help fund all of that.
Can you bring that down to the stairs?
No.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions?
Civic Center, would you, Rebecca, would you please come up for a minute? I just have a couple of questions.
So just to be clear, I don't know the budget for the Civic Center for next year. I wasn't allowed to be in on those meetings, so I don't know anything.
Funny, me and you weren't allowed to be in on those meetings.
I wasn't allowed to speak about the Civic Center budget. Susan and Steve wouldn't allow me in there.
The mayor controls the Civic Center budget, has always controlled the Civic Center budget.
Did you meet with other department heads regarding their budget?
If you were department head over the Civic Center, that would be different, but you are the caretaker employee.
I did create Rebecca as a department head of the Civic Center.
So I can't really answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Patricia should be able to answer your questions, though.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. Um, I would like to ask more people questions, and I asked certain people to be here, department heads, but I just don't know where to go at this point. Almost every question I asked is a little bit uncomfortable responses, so, um. Mr. Clear, would you just come up for a minute, please? I just want to, you, you're here, so I want to respect your, your work and. Goodness, don't fall down, because Rob will have to, Bobby will have to catch you. She's on the end. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
I look forward to attending tomorrow evening's meeting. Are you okay with the budget? What are your, what did you do to, did you, is this the budget you presented?
Uh, I think it is. I think it's a hundred and twenty that showed up in your report, and that's, I originally had, I had one for about a hundred and eighteen, then we added twenty-five hundred to, um, for utility costs. So it's that one twenty. Yeah, we, we can make that work.
Did, did your, uh, did your employee get increase in wage?
I don't know.
Yes, three percent.
Okay.
No, wait a minute, he's a department head. You said no department heads, right? No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I wish, yes, thank you. See you tomorrow evening, Jim. I, I don't know. Adam, do you have anything you want to say?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to come up and speak, or are you good?
I'm, I'm good. You guys are good, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay. Never seen such a thing. I'm good.
Does anybody else wish to speak?
At this point, it doesn't, yeah, never mind. I'm good.
Okay, can we make?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we consider ordinance number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance to vacate a portion of the east-west alley in the city of Peru.
Second.
Roca?
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Saad Ashni?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes.
Haley? You have something to say?
Yes. Um, the Plan Commission gives a favorable recommendation as seven to one, or seven to zero, sorry, to vacate this alley.
Any questions?
Thanks, Haley.
Welcome.
I make a motion that we approve, ordinance twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Roca?
Order to vacate.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Ramsey?
He said yes, I think. Did you say yes? Yes.
Saad Ashni?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two. This is another ordinance to vacate a north-south alley in the city of Peru.
Second.
Roca?
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Saad Ashni?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes.
The Plan Commission also gives a favorable recommendation for this ordinance, uh, seven to zero.
Make a motion that we adopt plan, the order to vacate, ordinance to vacate, ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Roca?
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Saad Ashni?
Yes.
Wal?
Yes.
Can you move on? Ordinance twenty-nine, twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-two. This is an ordinance to rezone in the city of Peru.
Second.
Roca?
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Saad Ashni?
Yes.
Wal?
Woh.
Yes. The Plan Commission gives a favorable, excuse me, sorry, a favorable recommendation to rezone this parcel, seven to zero.
What is it?
It's a B3 to N1. Yes. It's just somebody who lived next to their business, right, that wanted to change it back to residential? The owners actually live a few houses down the street, but it used to be Stroop's School, I believe. And they're wanting to sell it, and the people that are wanting to buy it are wanting to put it into a single-family home. So, they just feel better for it to be a residential instead of a business. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 29 2022.
Second.
Okay, Roque.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Cloco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Woh.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Resolution, September 13, 2022.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution, September 13, 2022. This is a resolution establishing a rate tracker.
Second.
Factor for the municipal electric utility of the city of Peru.
Second.
Okay, Josh?
Consider?
Yes.
Roque, I mean.
Roque.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Cloco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Woh.
Yes.
Hello. So, as in front of you, the quarterly tracker that we have is just to pass through fuel costs from our wholesale power sales through IMPA. And this tracker, again, amazingly, is a overall decrease of 3 1/1,000th of a cent per kilowatt.
Take care.
Headed in the right direction.
That's right. We're going to take it as long as we can. Because that puts ours at $110.20 for 1,000 kilowatts, right around 11 cents. Duke Energy is at $180.99 for 1,000 kilowatts, 18 cents, 65% almost higher than us. Heartland RMC, which is west or east of us, is at $144.83 for 1,000 kilowatts. Miami CAS is $144.55, so they're both about 31% higher than us in Peru. So, we're in the right direction. It's not always going to stay there, but we're doing the best we can.
You're a good guy today.
We need to enjoy it, probably, here.
Economic factors are not favoring our position.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution, September 13, 2022.
Second.
Okay, Roque.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Cloco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Woh.
Yes.
If I could take a moment to thank the city, the police, the fire, and the street department, and all the guys that helped us out in our outages and that big storm up in Oakdale. It was, we had 2,200 meters out. I contacted you about that. We had 2,200 meters out. Our guys worked 16, 17 hours. I know the street guys were out for a while. It's great to see them out and helping us when they can. Hopefully, we can get to reciprocate one day. We try, but, so, it was a long first day and a long second day. But we were down to 30 meters by the end of the second day. And those were all just damages that electricians had to fix and roofers had to fix and stuff like that. So, we apologize for anybody that was out 24 hours. But in that situation, where it was completely across our whole territory, we, my people performed admirably. Men and women there are amazing, and everybody at the city that helped us out, we can't thank them enough, so.
Man, that's the biggest thing, working together.
Absolutely. Thanks, Josh. Okay, resolution number 14 2022.
I'll make a motion to adopt, or to consider, resolution number 14 2022. This is the reappropriation resolution.
I'll second that.
Roque.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Cloco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Woh.
Yes.
Okay, it says, where is it now being determined that is now necessary to appropriate more money than it was originally appropriated in the annual budget? We are going to need to amend the appropriation for the non-safe reverting fund.
Unsafe, non-reverting fund.
Unsafe, non-reverting fund to add $42,302.66.
Okay, let's just say, I'll make a motion to amend resolution number 14 2022 to change the $19,400 to $61,702.66.
You want the $61,703?
That's fine with me.
That makes it easier.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, make it $61,703.
I just need a second on that.
Second.
Roque.
Pete, you seconding that?
Yeah.
Okay, Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Cloco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
And Woh.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 14 2022.
Second.
Roque.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Cloco.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell. Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Woh.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We are down to communications.
I have something important I'd like to say. Tomorrow, I am going to be filing an order of protection. And I have asked, this individual is on the planning commission, I have asked...
Is this really the time for that?
Yes. I have asked Susan, not Susan, I'm sorry, the mayor, to consider releasing this individual from the planning commission. Police report's been filed, and the order of protection will be filed in the morning. I'd like you to reconsider that, Pat. Okay.
I'm sorry, this is not a time for this right now. It's not part of the agenda.
Well, it's the communications part. So, it's okay. I can do this.
You can go ahead and give your opinion.
I just did. I'm asking or requesting that you consider removing this gentleman from the planning commission. And I'll bring you a copy of the protective order tomorrow. I've talked with, yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any communications?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?